Okay, will the secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Como?
Here.
Dr. Cooperstall?
Here.
Dr. Jimenez?
Here.
Ms. Leahy?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Meyer? Absent. Mr. Corburg?
Excused.
Mr. Spivey? Mr. Spivey?
Absent.
Mr. Turner? Mr. Turner? Thank you, yep, can hear you.
Sorry.
Mr. Baines? Mr. Baines?
Excused.
Mr. Baggett?
Here.
A quorum of the Board of Education is present to the public hearing regarding waivers for elementary licensure and art, music, and physical education, high school civics exam, and instructional hours pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 118.381B of April 5, 2021 is called to order. We'll now have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The pub- the public hearing is being held to review the School District of La Crosse request to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction to waive the requirements for Wisconsin Statute 118.331M, A, A1, Wisconsin Statute 121.021J, and Wisconsin Statute 121.021F for the 2020-2021 school year in light of the impact of COVID-19, the COVID-19 health crisis, which has greatly impacted continuity of an engagement with instruction throughout our district despite educators' stalwart efforts. Is there anyone present who would like to address the waiver request? Okay, since there is no one here that would like to address the waiver request, then we will close the public. Yep.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Como.
This is Juan, I'll second.
Okay. All right, hearing, no request from the public, a motion was made by Ms. Como and seconded by Mr. Jimenez to close the public hearing, and we'll have a roll call vote. Ms. Como?
Aye.
Dr. Jimenez?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Dr. Cooperstall?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll now move to the regularly scheduled board meeting for this evening. And we will... Laura, do we need to go through another roll call vote for the record?
No, I've got it.
Okay, perfect. Then we'll move-
To approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
So tonight's agenda was previously distributed to the board, a motion was made by Ms. Como and, I believe, seconded by Mr. Jimenez to approve the agenda as submitted unless there is a motion to amend. Hearing no motion to amend, we will have a roll call vote. Ms. Como?
Aye.
Dr. Jimenez?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Spivey?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Dr. Cooperstall?
Aye.
We have no speakers registered for this evening, so we will move to consent agenda announcements.
So you will notice a rather robust HR approval agenda for this evening, as often happens this time of year. We do have a couple of employments and a number of retirements, but I'm going to let Patty go first because she wants to talk a little bit about one of the employments, I think.
Good evening. So tonight, we have the pleasure of introducing Matt Wenthey to you. Matt comes to us from the Gale Etrick Trempeau School District with over 25 years of experience in education. He has over 12 years of teaching experience and has eight years' experience as a principal and five years in activities director. For the last three years, Matt has served as both the business manager and human resource director at G E T, which has given him the opportunity to work with all employee groups. We are impressed with Matt's school district knowledge, HR experience, and overall professionalism, which will ensure a smooth transition to the HR director position after Mark White's retirement. And so it is with great confidence that we recommend Matt Wenthey to the position of human resources director for the School District of La Crosse.
Thank you, Patty. So we have 20 retirements on the agenda tonight totaling, I think, if I added it up correctly, if my math is good, about 546 years of experience in the School District of La Crosse. We have one administrator, 12 teachers, three teacher assistants, one administrative assistant, and three custodians. So really quite a group, I'll try to be brief, but yet I think it's important to mention everybody. So I have 19 of the retirements, and then we'll have one at the end. So these are the people who are retiring tonight, where they're currently working in the number of years that they have worked for the School District of La Crosse. Lana Byer is an administrative assistant for the Activities Department at Central High School, and she's been with us for 29 years. Jean Brady Gillis is a second grade teacher at Emerson Elementary, and she has been with us for 30 years. Nancy Brewer, a first grade teacher at Southern Bluffs in the School District of La Crosse for 31 years. Carolyn Bueller, custodian at Southern Bluffs, 19 years. Phyllis Chek, teacher assistant at Emerson and Northside, 28 years. Marcia Crowley, art teacher at, currently, State Road and Bluffview Academy, 29 years in the School District of La Crosse. Nancy Doucette, special education teacher assistant at Central High School, 20 years. Patty Fuller, teacher at SOTA Elementary, 22 years in the School District. Lanay Burns, art teacher at Lincoln, 22 years in the School District. Shelley Healy, first grade teacher at State Road, 33 years in the School District. Steve Hungerhold, custodian, 11 years in the School District, and he is at Hinchen and Spence. Joel Lynn Jensen, second grade teacher at Summit Elementary, 35 years in the School District. Tom Cammer, science teacher at Logan High School, 38 years. Anne Coth, English teacher, also at Logan High School, 26 years. Kelly Mickelson, also at Logan High School, she's an English teacher and has been in the district for 22 years. John Miller's an engineer custodian at Central High School, has been in the district for 37 years. Lori Rand is a pre-K teacher, and she is at Summit, or pre-K teacher assistant, pardon, at Summit for 22 years. Julie Van Dunk is a school social worker at State Roads, also does guidance work there for 32 years. And last but not least is Deb White, Title I reading teacher at Spence, has been in the district for 22 years, and someone who I know pretty well. You may have noticed on the screen, she loaned me her computer to use tonight, so that we were using outside district computers, so. So great number of people, great people that are retiring. I wish I could go on and on, there are some really fantastic teachers and teacher assistants, administrative assistants in this group. I would ask Shelley if she would highlight our administrative retirement that we have tonight, if she's here.
I'm here, good evening. Well, it is my honor tonight to announce the retirement of Dirk Hunter, principal at Summit Environmental School, after 38 years of dedicated service to the students, staff, and families in the School District of La Crosse. Dirk began his career with the district in 1983, where he was a teacher at Roosevelt Elementary for nine years. And in January of 1992, Dirk was hired as the principal of Summit Elementary. He has been a valued member of the elementary team for just short of 30 years, bringing considerable knowledge and experience. Recently, Dirk introduced Laura Huber prior to her acceptance of La Crosse Public Education Foundation's Leadership Award. As part of her initial remarks, she acknowledged Dirk as a former recipient also of that leadership award. Her comments after his introduction encapsulate how those of us on the elementary principal team feel and how his leadership will be missed. She stated, "Your friendship and approach to leadership has been a model for me over the years we have worked together. For those of you that don't know Dirk well, he is the kind of administrator who is not afraid to ask all of us to be better. Dirk looks beyond the distractions and focuses on what is right for kids. In fact, even when Dirk is not present at our elementary principal meetings, his influence is so great that someone will inevitably say, 'So if Dirk were here, what would we do?'" And then our group often adjusts its direction. Dirk leaves a legacy that he can be proud of. Dirk was a member of the principal team, along with Mr. White, that presented the research to the school board many years ago regarding the impacts of 4K programming. Their team ultimately created the 4K model that is used throughout the state of Wisconsin, known as the La Crosse model. And the impact of this decision has not only been felt for almost a generation, but will live on for generations to come. In 2010, after many years of planning and preparation, Summit embarked on their journey of being an environmental school, in which an environmental focus is integrated throughout the curriculum. Outdoor environmental zones such as Wisconsin Prairie Grasslands, a frog pond, weather station, butterfly and vegetable gardens, and evergreen and pine forests allow students to have firsthand experiences in natural environments. Last year, I was even able to participate in one of those experiences, school-wide ice fishing, and it will be a treasured memory for me, as I'm sure it was for the students. Dirk has also held many impactful supervisory positions during his tenure. He supervised the EL program, English Link Learner program, and created newcomer centers for new arrivals from Laos, which included classes in the evenings for parents to support them in learning English, and they in turn taught us Mung. He also supervised the cultural liaison program, and he indicates that it taught him a lot, and he had the privilege of working with Mr. Shondell Spivey and Mr. Tony Yang. And most recently, he has supervised the district summer school program, which is a huge undertaking, and he has streamlined many aspects such as online applications, course registrations, and taking attendance. Dirk is a valued colleague that I am proud to call friend, and he's had an impactful career that will be felt in our district, our community, and at Summit Environmental School for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. That concludes the consent agenda in terms of HR items. I would ask perhaps Dr. Cooperstall, after the consent is approved by the board, that you allow Matt a few minutes to present to the board. I think he's got a couple words he would have to say.
Thank you, Mr. White. The consent agenda is a mechanism used by the board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. Are there any items that board members would like to have removed from the superintendent's consent agenda? All right, then I need a motion in a second.
I make a motion to approve the items on the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I'm sorry, was that, who was that second?
That was Juan.
All right, so a motion has been made by Ms. Como and seconded by Mr. Jimenez to approve the items on the superintendent's consent agenda as presented. We'll have a roll call vote. Ms. Como?
Aye.
Dr. Jimenez?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Spivey?
I'm conflicted, so many great retirements, we need to keep them in a district, no, aye.
Mr. Turner? Mr. Turner, could you repeat your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Cooperstall?
Aye.
All right, Mr. White, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Now, Matt, if you're with us, and I think that you are, if you would like to say a few words to the board, this would be a great time to do so.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I am excited to be part of the La Crosse School District. I've known about this position, that this might be opening up for about a year. Mark and I often serve together as part of a job fair panel discussion with Brenda Leahy at D W L. And a year ago, Mark had mentioned that this would, you know, likely be one year left. I've been thinking about this job for that long, so I'm excited. I loved my experience at G E T, I was there for 26 years. I was a high school English teacher, activities director, middle school principal for eight years, and then the last three years in the district office. I've had a lot of different superintendents, and I've learned a little bit from every one of them, so all that experience has brought me to where I am now. And right now, in my new role, I'm looking forward to working collaboratively to attract and retain a diverse quality staff.
Thank you, and welcome aboard. Any other comments from board members?
You have big shoes to fill, so.
I do.
But welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Excited to have you, Matt, and of course, you will hopefully continue to be on a panel for me, so I've... But we're going to ask-
That's honestly one of my favorite jobs.
Okay.
Welcome, excited to see what new and innovative things you bring to this position.
Okay, we're going to move to the board consent agenda. Are there any items from the board consent agenda that members would like to remove?
I make a motion to approve the items on the board consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion has been made by Ms. Como and seconded by Mr. Jimenez to approve the items on the board's consent agenda as presented, and we will have another roll call vote. Ms. Como?
Aye.
Dr. Jimenez?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Spivey?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Dr. Cooperstall?
Aye.
All right, we're going to move down to matters reserved for board action, and we're going to begin with the resolution in support of transgender, non-binary, and all LGBTQ plus students.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution in support of transgender, non-binary, and all LGBTQ plus students as presented.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I believe that second was about at the same time. So a motion has been made by Ms. Como, seconded, I believe, by Mr. Corburg to adopt the resolution in support of transgender, non-binary, and all LGBTQ plus students as presented. I will now open it up for discussion.
I'd just like to say that I was, I'm really glad that the board members who put the effort into this resolution was able to do it and do it quickly, so it could be voted on tonight. In fact, I wanted to get back from my vacation, and I would, just made it by about 15 minutes, because I, I think these two resolutions tonight that we, that we're going to be voting on speak highly and speak what this district needs to be about and what it is about. So just glad to have this item up for, for a vote tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Corburg. Ms. Como, I believe you were-
He said it all, come on.
I agree, and thank you again, Dr. Cooperstall and Dr. Engel for, for taking the initiative, for writing it.
Thank you, Ms. Leahy. Any other questions or comments about the resolution? Then we're going to have a roll call vote. Ms. Como?
Aye.
Dr. Jimenez?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Spivey?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Dr. Cooperstall?
Aye.
Next, we have a resolution in support of the Mung, Asian-American, and Pacific Islander community.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution in support of the Mung, Asian-American, and Pacific Islander community as presented.
Second.
A motion has been made by Ms. Como and seconded by Mr. Corburg to adopt the resolution in support of the Mung, Asian-American, and Pacific Islander community as presented. I will now open it for discussion.
I would take everything Mr. Corburg said and apply it to this resolution as well.
I think that, for me, what I would like to see, and I don't know if this is out of order or whatever, but for the sake of the folks that are watching this live, can we have those resolutions read? Are they expected to go back to the school board minutes and read it? I think it's a strong statement, both of them are strong statements, and I think that we should take some time to have them read out loud. We don't have to do that right now, but at some point in this meeting, I think it will make sense.
I appreciate that comment, Mr. Spivey. My understanding is that these will be publicly shared tomorrow. Dr. Engel, would you like to speak to how this will be disseminated to the public and to our staff?
Absolutely. We intend to post these on social media, which a lot of our community is connected to. We'll also be sharing it with all staff members as a part of an email that will go out, each of them separately. And then the third way is that in my message to parents this week, it will be a part of that message to, to let every parent in our community know that we have, that the board has supported these communities at this time.
Mr. Spivey? Does that sound satisfactory to you?
Sure. Yes.
I appreciate your comment about the importance of reading them, and I don't think in the history of the board we have read the resolutions, but if you would like to, we can take time to do that.
I think it's fine, it's going to be disseminated that way to all those different source, resources of, and, you know, everybody's essentially going to see it. I just think for those that are reading it or looking now and watching this live, it might be important for them to hear it, but it's not something I'm willing to, it's fine.
It's also available on board docs, if people are following along, the public, it's in the public content of the board docs, so those resolutions are both available right now.
I do want to take a moment to thank Mr. Lee for working on this resolution, along with Dr. Engel. Thank you for your work on this important resolution.
Can I add something, Lori? So when I read both these resolutions, my initial reaction was like, it's, you know, it's pretty sad that we live in a society where we-
So when I read both these resolutions, my initial reaction was like, it's, you know, it's pretty sad that we live in a society where we actually have to create these resolutions and pass these resolutions and then publicize them, but it's extremely important that we do it, and I'm happy to have read them. I'm happy that we're doing that beyond just parents and the community members, the taxpayers, the voters. I think it's important, and maybe Dr. Engel said this, I might have missed it, but I think it's important that the student body is aware of these, probably more than voters. I mean, the student body really needs to, to read these and be aware of these resolutions as well. So that's my one comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Any other?
Go for it.
Yep. You can go ahead.
Okay, I was just gonna say, I can think of a couple of students who would be really excited to see the board publishing these resolutions, so it would be great to get this out to the student body as well.
Thank you, Mr. Baggett. Mr. Lee?
Yeah, and so I guess in writing this, it was kind of really conflicting for me, right? Where it was like, you know, like, I'm glad this is happening, but I'm also really upset that, that like, that we would even need to come to this where like, we would have to, you know, write resolutions, to pass resolutions for something that should be so, should be so common for us, you know, that should be like, like just being nice to people, you know, like something that should be so common for everyday human beings, but because it's not like that, like for like all of us, right, that that we really need the time to, to have to do these things, right? And like, to really understand that hate on Asian people or our Hmong community, that it does stem from the same sources of of issues that the Black and Brown communities, you know, also feel as well, right? That it's all related, and it's from the same source. And it's really sad that it has to come to this where, where we have to write resolutions, but like, it's needed, right? And so like, I'm really excited and really happy that we got this passed, but like, to understand that, it's also really upsetting that we have to do this to just, to just live, right? And so, so thank you for inviting me to, to kind of take part in this and to help you kind of write it and all. And I just want you all to understand that it, it was very difficult putting it together. So, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. If there are no further questions or comments, we're gonna move to a vote.
I do have a question, if you will. So in the process of concocting these resolutions, why weren't there any student body present in, in, in writing these things? Is that something we usually don't? Well, I reckon this, these are very, very important to the trans students and Hmong students, so I think that even if we didn't do this historically, that students should be at the forefront or at the table, if you will, in concocting these resolutions. Why wasn't that a thing? If we have an answer to that.
Historically, unless that predates me on the board and so Mr. Corburg or Ms. Como can speak up, but students have not historically taken part in the writing of resolutions for the board approval. There are processes in place, I assume, at their high schools for the student governance there, if, if they would like to do that. And I would also say, in the case of both of these resolutions, time was of the essence. And given what is happening at this very moment with regards to our trans and non-binary students and with regards to the AAPI community, we only have two school board meetings in April, and we wanted to get it on the agenda as soon as possible to make sure that we are showing our support and standing in solidarity, but I appreciate your comment, Mr. Turner.
Thank you.
All right, Laura, we'll have a roll call vote. Ms. Como?
Aye.
Dr. Jimenez?
Aye.
Ms., or Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Spivey? Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Dr. Cooper Stoll?
Aye.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is our first reading for G C four regarding officer roles.
I make a motion to grant first reading approval to G C four officers' roles.
Second.
A motion has been made by Ms. Como and seconded by Mr. Turner to grant first reading approval to G C four officer roles. I will now open that up for discussion. You will note that the changes, proposed change revisions appear at the end of G C four specific to the role of a governance officer.
I think it's a great idea to add this position in to give us just one more year to get comfortable with our new governance structure. Potentially after that year, we may not need it anymore, but I think it would be good to have somebody who's focused on ensuring that we are following our new governance structure and helping us through that, especially with potentially new board members coming on.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Other questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Well, there has been a motion to approve the reading and, and second it. And I do want to say, I agree with Mr. Jimenez. I don't think that it is necessary to have us, have this be a standing position on the board. I think that, in fact, it should be revisited a year from, from now prior to board reorganization. And if it's, you know, and I would, I would suggest review, the board review it just on a, you know, on a yearly basis, and then remove it when necessary. In the meantime, we need to include it, obviously, in our policy language if we're going to do that.
I, I think it's a good idea. We, we talked about it initially, and then we kind of backed off of it and gave it a try for about a year now, and, and I think it's a good idea to, to try it and see if it can help the board move along and do what it wants to do efficiently. So I, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, so any other questions or comments about the language? Again, it should look familiar because it's based on what we reviewed already before we move to a roll call vote. As per our policy, policies that will come forward at the next meeting as part of the consented, board consent agenda. All right, Ms. Tiger Wall, can we have a roll call vote, please? Ms. Como?
Aye.
Dr. Jimenez? Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Spivey?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Dr. Cooper Stoll?
Aye.
Okay, we'll now move to the information portion of the meeting, and we will begin with operational expectation monitoring report, O E, global operation, operational expectation.
Hello, everyone. This is my report tonight. O E one, global operational expectations is pretty broad. It kind of covers all the other operational expectations, and as a result, it's relatively general. So as you work through it, if you get to the O E one global operational expectation, the general statement is, "A superintendent shall not cause, allow, or fail to take reasonable measures to prevent any practice, activity, decision, or organizational condition that is unlawful, unethical, unsafe, disrespectful, imprudent, in violation of board policy, or endangers the district's public image or credibility." Indicator one indicates the district is compliant with 100% of state, federal, and DPI laws and regulations. For the evidence, there's an attached compliance documentation letter as well as linked to a financial audit that indicates the district was compliant with 100% of state, federal, DPI laws and regulations for the last year. Indicator two is a review of our O E policies, so it's a bit meta in nature. We have reviewed five of our policies at this point. We have not reviewed them all, and so for O E three, four, five, and six, they were marked in compliance. O E 10 was marked in compliance with exceptions noted, and we just led on that last month. Indicator three is no legal charges or formal regulatory complaints against the district result in a finding of negligence or an intentional violation of federal, state, or law. The attached compliance documentation letter indicates that the district did face legal charges or formal regulatory complaints for the last year. Then lastly, indicator four, no written complaints against the superintendent are presented to and substantiated by the board, and the attached compliance documentation letter indicates that that was the case. So this is a relatively simple O E as it is overarching in nature. Any questions on O E one?
I do. I think that we could mark this in compliance. I think I'd be okay with that, but I still think maybe we should consider indicator two as not in compliance. Not for anybody doing something wrong, just the fact that we have not reviewed all the O Es. And so in that respect, we, we don't know if there is a significant violation or not compliance. I'm not saying there is, but because we have not reviewed it, could we honestly say with 100% certainty that we are in compliance?
I, I, that certainly makes sense. One thing that we could potentially do is, is, you know, in a, in a given year where we had a whole cycle of our policy monitoring, we would have had an opportunity. We are hopeful to get there by the fall, and so an opportunity maybe be to revisit it as an interim potentially, once we've had an opportunity to monitor all the O Es, but that position certainly makes sense, Dr. Jimenez.
Another way to think about it is maybe changing the language of the indicator to talk about the policies that were reviewed. Right? So just changing it a little bit to say that there's no significant violation of or not compliance with any of the policies reviewed in the given year. Then I would feel more comfortable with saying that it's in compliance, but again, that, that's just one person's perspective. It doesn't mean that it's the right one.
Other board members, what are your thoughts on, on this? The board will have to sign off on whether or not we agree with Dr. Engel's assessment. Dr. Engel, hearing Dr. Jimenez's concerns, are you still comfortable with keeping that in compliance?
Potential modification will be in compliance with exceptions noted. The major exception being that we have not monitored some of the O Es. You know, the results policies have a, they're, they're written a little bit differently, progress or, you know, reasonable progress made, you know, we don't have that option for O E expectations because you either do them or you don't, you know, which makes sense. With exceptions noted, I think would be a potential middle ground there to identify that there is a deficiency, but it's also maybe a reasonable one at this time.
Okay, so just so the board members are clear, that means if it comes back, when it comes back forward for the board to vote on it, that we what, the only change will be that for that particular indicator, it will move from in compliance to not in compliance with exceptions noted. Any questions or concerns about that from board members?
I think Mr. Turner was saying something. We just couldn't hear him.
Okay. Mr. Turner?
Can you, can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, oddly, okay, yeah, I was talking, and then you start talking, Laura, so you might have didn't hear me. No, so I, I actually am in agreement with, with Juan. It's just very hard to gauge it right now, just because we, we haven't, hard to market compliant when it's, it's not, and we haven't worked toward it. So, given the year. So I would, I would say for sure, the way you phrased it, Dr. Engel, would probably be the, the way that I'm more comfortable with right now in voting on it.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Okay. So we are gonna move to the next information item, and that is the results monitoring report, R 3.5, involved citizenship.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, welcome, Matt. Matt and I, we went to principal school, which seems ages ago. We went together, right, Juan? We had the dream team. So we have a number of the administrators in La Crosse. We're actually in the same cohort. Pretty, pretty interesting how that worked out. So welcome, Matt. Tonight's results policy 3.5, recognize the impact of positionality on how individuals see, understand, and experience the world around them. When originally we started to talk about this results policy, there were some, some discussion regarding having perceptions. And what the discussion led to was, we're, we're interested in perceptions, but more interested in student learning, in measuring student learning in this regard. So with that being said, submitted tonight is a plan to determine the learning regarding results policies 3.5. There's two main considerations. The first is that, is that the, the, the measurement should occur during the core courses. So often, and this is another consideration, often these conversations are occurring, but they may not always occur in the core courses, and if they are, they're not being measured in a, in a tangible, consistent way across the district. So with this results policy and what I'll talk about shortly is standards-based learning in our grading practices, I believe we can come up with a good plan to measure results policy 3.5. So the process of demonstrating learning line as well with the district work towards standards-based learning. So just let me take a moment to talk about standards-based learning. Another way to look at it is pandemic learning. One of the takeaways, the benefits, is that we now fully realize that we cannot teach every standard to mastery that's listed in our, in our, in our scope and sequence. I think I read once that if we were going to teach our ELA standards, every one of them to mastery, that students would have to remain in our system until they were 23 years old. That's what it was estimated. So what we're doing this year is working on what are those essential standards? What are the most critical pieces of information, or not piece of information, critical standards that we need to have students know that are persistent, that will help them in future learning? All of our content areas in the secondary are doing this work. And, and they are narrowing down those standards they want to teach to mastery, not exposure to. Those are really the other standards. We will still teach all the standards, but we want to identify those standards that we want mastery from our students. And that mastery means relentless learning opportunities, meaning that they will be exposed again and again until the preponderance of evidence means that our students are proficient in these particular standards. Some of the standards I'll present later tonight are the exact ones that will be part of our standards-based learning movement and will be, I think, good information for results policy, but more importantly, good for our students to be well-rounded citizens. In particular, in social studies, our new standards were released two years ago, and we've been working on them. There are the ones that were placed in the board document tonight that have been specifically identified as standards that are very close to what the results policy 3.5 is looking for. What we haven't determined yet is what core course these standards will be part of, and that's ongoing work. We anticipate that work will go in, in the spring and throughout the summer, but we will have that done. The next step will be determining the assessments. And when you think of assessments, you're probably talking about, you're probably thinking of a standardized test or a unit test. That's not necessarily the case. We're looking at proficiency rubrics is for the grading aspect of it, meaning that students will be able to represent their learning in a variety of ways in, in, until mastery can be determined. It's not one of those situations where you're exposed to it, you didn't learn it, and then we're going to move on to the next item. So these will be core essential standards as part of our curriculum in social studies. We've also identified some of our standards in ELA. We've also identified some of our standards in E L A. The new E L A standards were released this year, and we're a little uh further behind social studies just just due to the the timeliness of when the standards were released. But we do have several standards identified there that are almost across the finish line with our secondary teachers um that will be identified that will align to results policy three point five as well. So standards are one thing, grading is another. In in historically, our grading practices are consistent, but not necessarily fair, meaning that your background knowledge, your experiences, if everything's associated with points, means that early opportunities to learn and they're weighted with points means that you're just measuring background knowledge more than the actual learning that occurs. So that's that's a bit of a shift uh for us, a way of looking at learning uh rather than grading. Um, and it's a good shift. It is one that will focus on instruction and learning rather than point totaling and tabulating uh mathematic algorithms to generate an A minus or a B plus. It'll be uh uh learning with proficiency rubrics aligned to these essential standards. You'll hear more about this in the months and uh to come. Um, it's exciting work, it's challenging work, but it's the right work, and it's related to the results policies three point five. And and uh that is the presentation for tonight. Do you have any questions for me?
I think just a comment for me, Dr. Lahucki. Um, I think, you know, you're ta- talking about grading versus learning. I think you're correct. That is the right conversation to have. And I'm really excited to hear where the district will go moving forward in that conversation. It is definitely a challenging conversation because it probably turns some traditions and norms on their head. But I think it'll be the right conversation and the right thing to do for our students.
Thank you.
Can you speak to how this is um also in many ways uh culturally responsive?
Represent representation of learning does not have to be a a a a multiple choice test. Is when I when I talk about the preponderance of evidence, that could be a conversation with a student. It could be a way of representing the learning in a way that is is uh um attuned to being uh culturally responsive. So it it puts the earn it puts the emphasis on the student, I think, to stay, okay, I I here's a topic, here's what I need to know, there's a clarity and a learning target, and here's how I want to demonstrate to you that I know it, rather than I have an assessment that I want to give to you, you show it on this particular assessment, and that is the only way that we'll look at 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 it. So I do think that this is a more culturally responsive way of learning and grading.
Thank you.
Are there other questions and comments for Dr. Lahucki? Dr. Lahucki, three point five and three point six are super important, and I appreciate your efforts to try to continue to drill down at those and make sure that we have um strong indicators for that.
It'll be ongoing work, so I anticipate each time that I uh present to you, you'll see further progress um because this work is ongoing as we speak.
Thank you, Dr. Lahucki. Okay, we're going to move to announcements, and we'll begin with our um student reps. Um, Mr. Baggett?
Awesome. Um, we are excited to be bringing most students back and moving away from the cohort model and very glad to still have an online option for people to stay safe at their own choice. I'll have more info for you on how that goes once it actually starts up. And at Logan, we are working, uh administration and students are working together to put together hopefully a good prom this year and at least have students involved so that it's not just um not just on administration if it's not the best year. But um
How are they going to run prom with social distancing? And I was, when I heard prom was going, I was like, how's that going to work?
I, that's a great question. I can tell you that uh Mr. Genibico is actively talking with county health and talking to students about like what they might want to do because even if there is an outdoor option, how good would it actually be? How would it work? What group size, what distance, slow dances? There's a lot to figure out. One of one of the main questions that we're asking right now is we have surveyed uh juniors and seniors separately, and we asked them, would you like to keep prom on May first? Or would you like to try to wait until sometime after the summer? Or like after graduation in like late June or whatever? And hopefully there's fewer restrictions, more opportunity to get vaccinated. And we do have the survey results, but we it's it's an ongoing discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Baggett. Um, Ms. Dagewell, did Mr. Baines join us or no? No, he did not. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Corburg.
Only one thing for the La Crosse Public Education Foundation tonight. Uh, those of us on the grants committee are reviewing the Gold Star Grant applications. And we have about forty-one, a little over forty-one thousand dollars to ward tonight. I think we've got uh twenty-one applications after after three, uh sixty-nine thousand dollars in requests. So there will be some paring down. But uh, again, a lot of good requests. Uh, I look forward to reading them, and we're meeting on Wednesday night. And I think these will be, if I remember correctly, they'll be awarded at the beginning of the month of May.
Thank you, Mr. Corburg. Okay, let's see what my announcements are. Um, spring election tomorrow. Um, our next board meeting will be on April nineteenth. Um, there will be a workshop that follows that board meeting. And then also on the twenty-sixth, we will have the board reorganization. And I'll turn it over to Mr. uh Dr. Engel if you have announcements.
Dr. Cooperstol, do you still want us to email uh ideas of whether or not we would like to be in a position again?
Yeah, what I'll do, um, thank you for that question, Ms. Como. Um, what I will do is about a week ahead of time, like last year, um, we'll just send out a a note so that board members can indicate board members in current roles can indicate whether they're interested in continuing them and board members who are currently not serving if they're interested. So yes, thank you for, thank you for keeping me in line, Ms. Como. All right, Dr. Engel.
That's possible.
Who would want that job? All right.
All right, thank you. Um, I've got three announcements. Uh, first, we had our last vaccination clinic on Saturday uh in conjunction with the La Crosse County Health Department. They were fabulous to work with, and we're so thankful that all of our employees had an opportunity to get vaccinated. Um, this will make a substantial impact on our community generally, but also um alleviate some of the pressure in our schools uh as it relates to staffing and some other things as we're able to scale back on quarantining of those that are fully vaccinated. So thankful for that opportunity. Uh, second announcement, uh, we are returning to five days a week in person as an option for high school and middle school students starting tomorrow. Um, there will probably be a few busing hiccups. We're prepared for those. And uh, we have good plans in place, and we've thought through um uh all of the options and opportunities for uh crowding and spacing and all that. But um, uh, it will still be a bit of a work in progress as well. Um, thankfully, the CDC uh assessed the existing literature and identified that a three-feet distance between students is sufficient to reduce spread of COVID nineteen. The caveat to that is that um contacts tracing and quarantine still remains for six feet distance. So we may have a few more quarantines than we had uh in the past, but we'll have many more days opportunity for students to get in-person learning, so we're excited for that. And the last announcement uh that I have is related to the state biennial budget. It is budget season for the the state government. Uh, this is an incredibly important time to get out and and be active with your legislatures to advocate for the budget that you believe is best for public education in La Crosse. Um, if you have any interest in discussing uh key issues for you as it relates to public education, I would be happy to sit down with anyone and talk about how to effectively advocate with your legislature for the issues that are uh on your top of mind. So um, I've sent out some letters to folks already and try and call and make appointments with legislators. Um, I intend to uh present at the Joint Finance Committee public hearings uh when they come to Western Wisconsin. Uh, so if you have any interest in uh legislative advocacy uh for public education and you would like to learn more, I'd be happy to meet with anyone. Um, we'll find a time, and uh we can make that happen. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, we're going to move to agenda planning. Can I, I need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the um April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one Board of Education agenda with any additions or corrections.
Second.
A motion has been made by Mr. Corburg and seconded by Ms. Como to approve the April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one Board of Education agenda with any additions or corrections. We'll have a roll call vote.
Ms. Como?
Hi.
Dr. Jimenez?
Hi.
Ms. Leahy?
Hi.
Mr. Lee?
Hi.
Mr. Meyer?
Hi.
Mr. Corburg?
Hi.
Mr. Spivey?
Hi.
Mr. Turner?
Hi.
Dr. Cooperstol?
Hi.
Okay, and so the meeting is adjourned. I'll see you in a couple weeks.
All right, thanks.
Have a good night.